We need a zapper that goes from here. We push a button.
Okay. Let's call the September 8th Andover City Council meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call, please. Troy?
Troy Taber, Councilmember.
Sherri Geisler, Councilmember.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Chris Estes, Councilmember.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Quentin Coon, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCoslin, Assistant City Administrator.
Neil Gosh sitting in for City Attorney JT Claus.
Les Mangus, Director of Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Deiter, City Administrator.
Item number three this evening is the invocation. I see Mr. Brad Toole, Pastor Brad Toole, back there from East Evangelical. Thanks for coming this evening.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and for its mercies, for the rain, for the cooler weather. We're thankful especially for the city in which we live and for all of these who give so liberally of their time and talent and treasure to serve all of us, to serve you. We pray your protection on all of those who put their lives on the line and who risk so much for our benefit. Thank you for those who oversee the legal and legislative aspects of our city as well. As we come upon an election cycle nationally, you've enjoined us to pray for our leaders, and so we do that. We know that each governs at your hand. We pray that you would watch over them, that they would lead well and lead in your name, and we pray tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you would stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Noah Kruger. I am a Cub Scout with PAC 584 here in Andover. We would once again like your permission to use Andover Central Park for our full family campout. Our camping dates are Saturday, October 10th, and Sunday, October 11th. October 17th and 18th, if it rains. We will launch model rockets, have a Barbie camp and a campfire. We will ask the fire chief for permission to have a fire. Thank you for your time.
Anybody have questions of Mr. Kruger?
I assume we need a motion to approve.
I think that would be well.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the Cub Scout PAC 584 to use the park on the dates and times as requested.
Sorry, second. I just have to say that I'm very impressed that he got up and spoke in front of this like this. Very impressed.
You got your first compliment this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by CR and a second by Sherri to approve the use of Cub Scout Troops 584's use of the Central Park as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're good to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are still in the public forum. Would anybody like to stand up and speak? Yes, ma'am? Could you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record?
My name is Joanne Barclay. I live at 111117 Terradyne Court, Andover, Kansas. I was told you were not taking public comments regarding the Terradyne rezoning. Is that true, or are we free to comment?
I'm going to defer to the Council President on this issue.
Ma'am, anyone in the public is open to come and speak to the council. If you would rather wait till we get to that agenda item, but anyone is free to speak at any time. I don't believe we'll have an official public forum at that agenda item, but anyone can speak at the council.
At this point?
So, go right ahead if you'd like.
Wait a minute.
Madam President, my suggestion would be tonight that we do not take public input on the item. We've taken it at the Planning Commission meeting, and we took it at the last council meeting. I think tonight we're trying to decide how to go forward on that item. And if there's an opportunity to go back to the Planning Commission with it, that would mean we would come back to the council also. But I think we've taken public input on this twice, and the council needs to make their determination tonight on what we're going to do, and further public input, in my view, on this particular item isn't necessary.
I understand what you're saying, Mark, but I also know, we received an email from you today, correct?
Yes, you did.
And since that's new information from the last meeting, if you just want to be brief...
I'll be very brief.
So that we all have the same information, then if we're not getting into the details of the issue...
No, it's very brief.
But I think you have a new concern.
Okay. I do have a new concern. I'm concerned about by what authority you, that this is even put back on the city council agenda. I was at the city council meeting. The vote was three to three. We were told prior to the meeting that it needed a four to two vote to come out of the council. That three to three, the amendment to amend the PUD did not pass, and that it was dead. So, the council at that time could have, I assume, could have taken up, will take it under advisement. We will not vote, but there was a vote that night. And I feel like revoting is a do-over, and I don't understand any grounds for a do-over. Thank you.
And that was the gist of your letter that we all received.
Absolutely. Yes.
So now, we all have heard that, and I think that's going to be addressed in the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're still in the public forum. Anyone else would like to speak?
Strange comment. My name is LaRue Gillespie. I live at 1123 Terradyne Court. And how does a citizen volunteer to help out with whatever the city needs? I don't know what to do. I could knock on your door and say hi. I'm an engineer, retired.
We have a lot of activities, a lot of committees, a lot of subcommittees, on a whole wide range of subjects.
Well, I'd be happy to volunteer for...
We would love for you to volunteer.
Okay.
If you could be so kind as to send an email...
Sure.
I know you know how to do that, to city council. I'll pick up on that, and we'll explore the possibilities for you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, don't we have an opening on planning? Yet, or not?
We might.
We do?
Okay. Still in the public forum. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, we will close the public forum and move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Caroline.
I would like to add an item before we accept the agenda. It would be 18A, and this would be for discussion of lease agreement for the historical museum and temporary signage for the historical museum. And so I guess part two of 18, or something like that, after our 18.
At the end of the agenda?
Yes. I think before member items, but is that the right number for it?
Yes, 18.5.
That's fine.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That would, well, with that exception, if there's nobody else that needs to add anything, I would move to accept the agenda as amended.
Second. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to pull agenda item number 11 by request of the applicant for Village Crossing also.
Okay.
Hang on a second. 11?
So pull the list.
It was a zoning amendment for...
Village Crossing?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
Would you like to amend your second?
I will amend my second.
Okay, we have an amended motion and amended second to accept the agenda as presented, with the exception of adding the discussion around temporary signage and the lease agreement with Historical Society and tabling item number 11. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven this evening, I believe our fire chief would like to present, or fire deputy chief would like to present some awards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I believe you may have recognized that we have a few extra people in attendance this evening. We have two heroes of our community here. Our accident survivor was hoping to be here this evening, but unfortunately he was not able to arrive just yet. Our two recipients of our award this evening, this is the Andover Fire and Rescue Life Saving Award, which Chief Russell and I are honored to be able to present this evening. This time, I'd like to ask McKenzie Ast and Clara Wade to join us up here at the podium, please. Good evening again. On July 27th, a young man by the name of Jordan was swimming with friends at the Terradyne Country Club pool, where Ms. Clara Wade and Ms. McKenzie Ast were working as lifeguards. At approximately 2:15 PM, Jordan dove into the deep end of the pool, traversed underwater for a short distance, and then failed to surface. Seeing the unusual position of the submerged swimmer, Clara sounded the alarm and immediately entered the water, making a subsurface recovery of the now motionless swimmer. The other guards cleared the remaining swimmers from the pool, as Clara returned Jordan to the surface and to the side of the pool, where McKenzie assisted in removing him from the water. During this time, the 911 system was activated, initiating a response from the Andover Police Department, Andover Fire and Rescue, and Butler County EMS to a submerged swimmer at the Terradyne Country Club. McKenzie assessed Jordan for a pulse and respirations, and then immediately began cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Andover PD and fire units arrived on scene within three minutes of that 911 call, and we found that the young man was both out of the water and was breathing. Firefighters continued the assessment and treatment of the young man, and along with EMS Medic 30 from Butler County transported him to a Wichita area hospital. Together, Ms. Ast and Ms. Wade are credited with saving the life of nine-year-old Jordan that sunny summer day, when his outing with friends turned tragic. Because of these ladies' quick action, calm response, and timely intervention, Jordan has seen a full and complete recovery, and unfortunately, his family was not able to join us here this evening. Mr. Mayor and Council, now that concludes our piece. Thank you very much.
Wow.
Congratulations, ladies. All right, we will move on to item number eight. I believe we have a couple presentations this evening. Mrs. Hunt, I see you back there. If you'd like to go first, that would be
I'm Candace Hunt. I'm with the Greater Andover Days Committee, and Jax is going to pass around the buttons and the poster for you guys to look at. Our buttons, brochures, posters, and most of our event t-shirts were all designed by Gary Israel again this year. So, getting into the event, it will be October 1st through 5th. On Thursday night will be the flag retirement ceremonies in the Andover area schools and concert at the gazebo. Friday night, we will have our tailgate party again with A.J. McCoslin Band performing. Something that we've changed this year is we've moved the fun run back to Saturday instead of Sunday. So it'll take place Saturday morning, and it'll start at 13th Street Sports Park, and we'll be through there, as well as the Red Bud Trail. Saturday, we'll have a parade, and all of our usual events, like the craft business expo, car show, kid fest, hot dog eating contest, kids watermelon eating contest, turtle races, ice cream social, fireworks, and our concert that evening will feature Radio Flyer. Also, throughout the day on Saturday, there'll be several local entertainment groups performing on the stage, as well as the gazebo. On Sunday, we will offer a Andover Community Church service at 10:00 AM at the gazebo. As you guys know, each year we donate 50 cents of every button sold to a local charity. This year, we chose Flint Hills Services, which provides services to assist people with disabilities to live and work independently in the Butler County community. One thing we always ask you guys for too is we need volunteers. The events that we're really looking for volunteers for are parade lineup and check-in, as well as our hot dog and watermelon eating contests. And if you guys are interested in helping with any of those, could you please contact Dana here at City Hall. And all of the registration forms for any of our events, as well as the schedule, can be found on the city's website. Unless you guys have any questions, that's all for me.
Sounds good as usual.
Okay.
We're looking forward to the event.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Candace.
Second presentation this evening, I believe G.L.M.V. is here. Tell us about the street shop.
Yes, Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Tom Montgomery with GLMB Architecture. With me I have Eric Gaitkins and Dan Winter, both at GLMB, working on their new maintenance and shop facility for Andover. Just want to give you an update, just a brief update tonight. You know, since we last discussed, we've been working diligently with staff, getting the refinements made with the building, all the things going to happen inside. At the same time, progressing with the technical documents, the final construction documents, and that's really the phase we're in right now, preparing the final technical documents of the project. So now's a very timely time, just to kind of show you where we're at, show you some of the changes we've made. And I'm going to backtrack just a little bit on this, if I got this. The building itself is located, let's see if I get this right. Well, you can see it's located just above, just to the right of the red and green, the existing red and green buildings, which is the Quonset Hut, and the other maintenance building there at Andover. It has a wash bay and three, four work base to it, plus an office area. We worked a lot trying to figure out exactly where the site, to locate the building on the site. We took several borings and did site survey, and so we've located the building to where we can actually add on to it to the north, a couple bays, and also to the south in the future, as many as three or four bays in the future. So I think situation-wise, it works out very well on-site. We're able to find out, we used a lot of on-site fill material. When we first took our soil borings, we initially found a lot of debris that was in the soil because of the way it was filled in, and the old beds that were there. But other borings we've taken, we found that debris is like a two-foot layer. So a lot of the soil we can use on-site, which I think would be very cost favorable for the project. We are working right now on alternatives to bring water to the site. We have four different alternatives. Our engineers are working with the city on to bring those to the site. Another thing too, in the red building, which is the existing maintenance building that we are tearing down, we're actually tearing that down just to the foundations, and we'll be using that as fill for materials. So we're going to keep the foundation walls in and reuse that building itself. A lot of the site also is going to be some rework on the electrical that's there on-site. So it's going to be not only a site for this building for, take care of the current use, but setting up a lot of things for future use of that site for the maintenance facility. It's a good look to the floor plan. Floor plan is very much the same as it was before. A couple things that we were trying to incorporate was the, we made some changes. The tool room, in talking with staff, we actually made that into the storm protected area. Before, we had a separate area, kind of a storage room for that. We increased the size and incorporated it as part of the tool room, made that a little bit bigger room, which increased the function for that space, but at the same time, gave a larger area for storm protection area. Also, we have the shower areas that are outside the locker rooms, we incorporated two showers for male, female locker rooms inside the shower rooms, or shower areas, which we think increased efficiency much better. But beyond that, the floor plan has stayed pretty much the same. We also have a mezzanine above, so it's still stayed about the 12,500 square feet. It shows an elevation of the building. The top elevation shows as you look at the doors, look at from essentially the southwest. And so you see the big bay doors that we have, and then to the right, you see the office entrances. Looking at the aluminum frame, look high durable materials. The wall construction itself is insulated precast concrete. Also have a metal roof on this, so we have a very durable, low-maintenance type facility. We're working, the next couple weeks, I hope, working on final colors. The next time we'll come and present this to you, we'll show you the colors that we proposed for the project. Again, this is kind of the asymmetric that kind of shows the building itself, the shape of it. And so we think it's could be, you know, it's a very utilitarian building, but I think at the same time, a very handsome building for the city of Andover, and one also is going to be very functional and do many of the things that you cannot do right now within your current facility. What we'd like to do is in October, October 13th, I think, your next council meeting, we'll probably come and we'll become, make another presentation and update, but request approval to put the documents out for bids. And so we could bid that soon after that meeting, mid-October, receive bids in the mid-part of November. So, schedule-wise, looks like we're right on schedule with our project. Any questions?
I have one. How is the, how's a architect's probable cost marrying up with our previous budget we set thus far? I know it's a guesstimate, but...
I thought we had a commitment from the architect to stay within the $3.2 million that the council had set previously, and I...
I think we're looking pretty good with it. We're going to do another refinement cost estimate here in the next couple weeks.
Okay.
But it looks like we're on target. I mean, we've seen some cost increase go, materials, you know...
Little bit, just recently.
But it's good timing. You know, with the way economy is going right now, it's going to be a good time to put the project out to bid. So we're real favorable on the project.
What is your probable total number of proposals you're sending out to, and how many are you hoping to receive?
As far as this project?
Yes.
I would anticipate, with this size of project, we would get, with the way the market is out there right now, we could get as many as 10 or 12.
Good, that's excellent.
I'd like to get at least five good bids, but I bet you we'd get a lot of interest on this project. It's the right size, it's the type of project, a lot of contractors areas would love to do.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Usually in Andover, we try to, our buildings have some longevity, usually 20-plus years. What, remind me, what did we plan for this? What are we thinking?
Better last 40.
40? Okay, I just, I'm somewhere in that 30, at least.
This project with the precast concrete, the metal roof, we have aluminum, heavy-duty aluminum frame systems for the windows. The doors, the doors are put on the man doors, are going to be FRP, or fiberglass reinforced panel doors. Not much area room for rust. As we go inside the building, look epoxy coated steel on our steel bar joists, very durable, very heavy-duty building.
Okay.
We should be very happy with it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you in a couple weeks, maybe. All right, move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. That is items A through H, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items A through H as presented.
Second.
Wish by CR, second by Chris, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10.
Mr. Mayor, the first item, item number A, agenda item number 10, is a public hearing for Cornerstone Office Edition Marketplace Commercial Second Edition, Marketplace Commercial Third Edition, Highlands at Terradyne, Cornerstone Fourth Edition, and Shadow Rock Edition. As you require, as the governing body where we call, these are all developer-requested benefit districts, and so if there's any comment tonight, let's just keep, I would just like to keep in mind that these were all requested assessments, and none of them were governing body-driven assessments.
Okay, at this time, let's open up a public hearing regarding the special assessment proceedings, and ask if anybody would like to speak. There being none, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to item B, which is about adopting the special assessment ordinances for 15 years and 20 years. Need to do those separately?
Yes, sir. The 15-year assessment ordinances for Cornerstone Office Edition, Marketplace Second, Marketplace Third, and the Highlands at Terradyne.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the special assessment ordinance, creating special assessment taxes, directing staff to notify the property owners of the benefit districts. You have Cornerstone Office Edition, Marketplace Commercial Second, Marketplace Third, Highlands at Terradyne, and spreading each assessments over a 15-year period.
Second.
Wish by CR, second by Sherri, to adopt the special assessment ordinances regarding the 15 years for each of the aforementioned projects as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, similarly, I'll make a similar motion for all of the identical additions, excuse me, for Cornerstone Fourth, Shadow Rock Edition, to approve the special assessment ordinances and creating special assessment taxes, directing the staff to notify property owners in those properties over a 20-year period.
I'll second.
Wish by CR, second by Sherri, to approve or adopt the special assessment ordinances for 20 years for Cornerstone Fourth and Shadow Rock Edition as presented. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Caroline.
Yes. Right now, other than some of the, actually, there is no owners in any of these places, correct? I mean, these will be, somebody will purchase into these locations, and will then be told what their assessments are going to be, or...
We have quite a few of them already in the Cornerstone and in the Shadow Rock subdivisions that have owners, and we do send the notices to those owners.
Okay, so they have been notified, and you haven't heard anything back from those owners?
The main question is, many times when they bought it, they were told that this is an estimate of the special assessments. The main concern is this isn't on top of that. No, this is...
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. So they've been aware that there would be assessments coming, and that...
They just want to make sure that this is what now we're talking about, and it is.
Very good. I just wanted to clear that up. That's it.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution in front of you is to adopt the public sale for the Series A 2015 general obligation bonds that we do not anticipate will exceed $7,350,000. Currently, we are projecting, what our financial advisors have talked to us about, is around a 3% net interest rate over a 20-year period. So, we would come back to you with this public sale in October.
So you need a motion from us?
Yes.
Accept the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve the public sale resolution of Series A 2015 general obligation refunding and improvement bonds not to exceed $7,350,000 in bond issuance.
Second. Wish by CR, second by Troy, to adopt the public sale resolution as presented. Motion by CR, second by Troy to adopt the public sale resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, we agreed to table. So, we'll move on to item number 12, which is Cornerstone Sixth Edition. Somebody presenting this?
A few weeks ago, this governing body approved the Cornerstone Sixth Edition final plat. Before you tonight are the contracts for the engineering services for the design and inspection of the public improvements, and an acceptance of the plans in order to negotiate the construction contracts. The developer provided you a letter requesting that he negotiate the construction contracts to shorten up the timeframe a little bit, and hopefully get most of that work done yet this winter before things are shut down for, for the winter. Staff recommends that you accept the engineering contract and the plans, and consider the negotiation of construction contracts.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the engineering contract with MKEC for their engineering and inspection services at Cornerstone Sixth Edition. Authorize the mail to, to the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
Good move.
Stopped you before you can...
Yes.
All right. Motion by CR, and a second by Chris to approve the engineering contract as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the engineering plans for Cornerstone Sixth Edition as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Chris to accept the plans for Cornerstone Sixth as presented. Further discussion?
Your turn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C. Developers looking for authorization to negotiate the construction contracts.
So move.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Sherry to authorize the developer to negotiate construction contracts with APAC, I believe it was, directly with APAC. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, before we get to item 13, I will do simili as I did to the last time this subject came up, and will recuse myself from this conversation. I will reiterate that I do not have a financial interest in this property, but I do have a personal interest.
Council members, at this time, we'll look at item, agenda item 13. We have discussion on the Teradyne zoning case Z-2015-02. First, I'd like to ask if everyone received the information from our city attorney on the discussion of the pending outcome of the tie, what our options are.
I have.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And we aren't having a public forum on the issue, but we did come up with a quandary last meeting where we had a tie, which results in not passing, but yet it wasn't a majority to fail it, so we end up with two cases. We have the situation where we need a majority to move in a particular direction if we feel that is one of our, one of our options.
Madam President, I've got a couple of comments.
Like to open it up for discussion.
I must state that I was under the belief, mistakenly so, that when a planning commission makes an affirmative recommendation, and it has failed, I was under the understanding that it automatically returns to the planning commission for reconsideration. They have all sorts of choices. And then it comes back up to the city hall, to the city council, at which time we can do anything with it by a normal majority vote. However, the legal opinions that we have, there appears to be a question as to the appropriateness of that, and therefore, ultimately, I'm going to make a motion to return this matter to the planning commission, with the understanding that the planning commission lists separately all of the conditions that the city has made recommendations to do, as to the vote that they have taken. And then to bring that back up to city council for them ultimately to decide one way or another. So, I can go further, but I think that's where we're headed, is, is not, not to revote it this evening, but to return it to the planning commission for further consideration, and then be brought back up here to the city council. But...
Okay.
Further comments?
But the planning commission would not revote on it. You're just asking for clarification on their previous vote. I personally believe they can do anything they want to do, but they do not have to revote. They simply need to specify the line items of all of the conditions that were met in determining what their decision was. That's really the intent of what the motion would be.
Expansion clarification.
Correct.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, Sherry.
Don't we have to be pretty specific, or not? Or it's just the whole thing goes back?
It's my understanding, if we have a majority vote to send it back to the planning commission, we need to cite some of the 17 factors that need clarification or further discussion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't know that our reasons for sending it back would be the same, but I could quote item on the factors and findings, number three, five, nine, 14, and 15, sending it back to the planning commission for reasons of overturning their original recommendation.
Okay.
So...
So, you're citing, or you're suggesting items three, five, nine, 14, and 15, you felt need more explanation?
Yes. And I mean, if you want me to go into some of that, I would. I mean, if we're supposed to be specific, but again, I don't know, I think for the public questioning, maybe the attorney spoke to me just before the meeting this evening, and you're going to have to tell me your name again, he's filling in for JT, but he might give that clarification that some of the public is wondering about, is why are we even doing this again? If you would, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Neil Gosh, again, sitting in for the city attorney, JT Klaus. The statute requires that if you want to send it back to the planning commission for additional consideration, that you specify the basis. Those are the words in the statute. So, I don't think you need an elaborate specification or explanation, but just a, kind of a due diligence on what you think needs additional consideration back down at the planning and commission.
Okay. So, you're just saying, but, but would you go ahead and explain about...
How the tie, what...
Why we are even doing this again this evening, as opposed to, it, our, our understanding is that, from what we heard from JT, is that the item could just be dead, and it's over with, but doing this adds another little level if we send it back. Would you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. The statute specifically is KSA 12-757, little D, and that explains the process of what a council can do in this particular situation with adopting a planning and zoning commission recommendation. It walks through that there are three options that a council can do, and the first one is it can adopt the recommendation by ordinance of the planning and zoning commission. Two, it can override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And the third one is, is that it can send it back to the planning and zoning commission by a simple majority vote, with specifying the basis of why you're returning it. So, they have some idea of what they're doing, and why you have more questions, I think is the intent. And then after that initial round, the planning and zoning commission pursuant to the statute can repropose their same original proposal that they already did. They can change it, or they can choose not to send it on to the council. That's at their discretion. And once it comes back, excuse me, at that point, you can, pursuant to the statute, vote to approve or not approve that particular recommendation, and at that point, if, again, if there's a three-to-three tie, it's our understanding by the statute, and our opinion that at that point, it does die.
In other words, you're saying that by showing an attempt to do this a second time, it's like we've shown every effort that we could possibly do?
We're following the statute.
Okay.
By, by doing the, when the first comes up, by doing one of the three specific items found in the statute, we're following its language and its recommendations. And then when it comes up a second time, at that point, if you choose, you can take no further action on the recommendation the second time it comes up.
You're saying you can just say we're not even going to take an action on it, after they've redone their work and sent it back to us?
No, ma'am. I should be more specific. At that point, you can adopt the recommendation, or you can reject the recommendation, or if there's a tie, there's no need to take any further action.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm going to try to explain it, and, and my understanding is that when the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval, we can't disapprove it without, with, without more than a simple majority.
Right.
That didn't happen. In my opinion, I think it should have gone back to planning commission. For some reason, it does not. That's what it's here for tonight. Then, once it comes back up here, we can do any, anything we want to do from a simple majority standpoint. That's, that's the purpose of the statute. So, unless somebody has some...
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
After having correspondence with Kim, it really got me thinking about this, and I felt like maybe, perhaps, since I was, you know, one of them that voted for it, I'd like to clarify why, with people in the audience and anyone that might be listening. I didn't expect the cameras today, so bear with me. So, for those that are listening, I feel compelled to explain my decision regarding the rezoning, and why I feel that we let down our city in the face of a tense situation with a few residents. I do not live in Teradyne, I have no money or interest in Teradyne, other than I represent them as a city councilman. As an elected official, it's my responsibility to make decisions based on the voices of our community, both people and businesses. Applicable laws, which we hope have been set in place to be clear and fair, although they're ever-evolving, and the direction which our city has asked us to move towards in our community, which is one of growth while maintaining a high quality of life. In this case, the owners of Teradyne are seeking to sell approximately 1.6 acres of land in an unused corner of the golf course. When the golf course was purchased, it was discussed as a means of raising a bit of revenue, and the request, they mentioned many items that the revenue could be used for. My understanding is that this golf course has never made money, and has been through many hands. In 2013, 157 golf courses around the country closed down. In the same year, there were 14 new ones. People, golf courses are on the decline, and I have to wonder what would happen, and what the course would look like if it went under. I wonder what would happen to the property value of all the Teradyne residents if it went under, and I wonder about the impact on the city if it went under. There were over 100 people who were against rezoning the corner of the golf course, the primary argument being a change in their quality of life, a change that would cause the view from their homes to move from prairie grass to new houses. I'm not sure if my fellow council members drove to that spot where the new homes would be, and looked at the houses whose views would be directly impacted, so I grabbed a couple of shots to show you. This is a view from, from the, the corner of this house here, and if you, it's hard to see, but there are literally two homes, two, that actually have a view to, directly to this lot, or to these two lots. Both of them, their garage is what's there. It's not their front, it's not their back, it's not a side window, it's their garage. So, to actually see the view, they would have to come out of their garage to see it. It's not blocking anything. Their homes are at an angle that goes towards the first view I had, which is more towards the middle of the fairways, and, and towards the house, or the Teradyne Country Club. So, to see the new homes, the residents would need to open their garage. So, for the rest of the residents, the view certainly would be impacted while driving, driving into their neighborhood, and this part of the argument I do understand. But the plan is for two brand-new homes to go in, to go into that and fit into the existing mold of the community. These homes would be half a million and a million dollars each. The new homes could do nothing but increase the value of the surrounding homes, and only slightly impact the view when pulling it out of the driveways. Other arguments were that the PUD was a contract with the residents. Well, no, the PUD was never a contract with the residents. I don't believe any of the residents that we've heard from put their name on such a contract. I don't believe that any of these residents invested in Teradyne during the planning process. I don't think so. What I saw and heard in that meeting, and through the many emails that were sent to us, are a group of residents who were stirred into a frenzy by a handful of people, excuse my expression, who, who have either a beef with Teradyne, a beef with Ben, or are scared of change in their neighborhood. Change is scary. The unknown is scary. But with the controls that Andover has put in place through the zoning and planning, and with the existing requirements of the course lots already, the homes would have been beautiful. I have nothing but respect for my fellow, fellow council members, their time, their expertise, and their wisdom. There were residents on both sides of the argument who were sent, who sent us emails. We heard from both sides in the room. The planning commission made sure all zoning requirements were met, and the only argument that I heard, which I would consider valid against, is a change in the view for that corner. Put up against everything I've just described, it's not near enough to overcome the use of this landowner, who's, of what they have requested of us. This is why I voted for the rezoning, and this is why I feel as a council, we failed on that vote. I do understand that we're looking at sending it back to the planning commission, and I agree with that. It sounds like that's what we want to do. But I would vote again today, with all the information that we have, the same way. That's all I have.
Thank you, Troy. Other comments?
Well, I don't think it's our intent this evening to re-debate this, pros and cons, is it?
No.
If, if that's the case, I, I would move to return this matter to the planning commission, and I would suggest that it be on the specific 17 items in total, even though they were partially answered. I think they should actually go through each one of them, and tell us exactly how they arrived at that decision. So, my motion is to return it to planning commission. The specifics are what I've indicated, all items on the zoning authorities that you have dictated to them, and to return it to us for further consideration. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by CR to return the zoning case Z-2015-02 back to the planning commission, citing all 17 items for further discussion, and we have a second by Quentin. So, further discussion?
Yes. Do we have, I'm not sure that we just tell them, you've got a whole new due over here, and we want to hear from everything, but we're not going to let the public present? So, it's kind of like, I'm wondering, are they now going to be able to have a formal protest petition? They obviously didn't know anything about that before. Do they now have a fresh start at a protest petition?
We'll update, take that. I will say that I had talked with staff about, if you did send it back to the planning commission, that we would try to email back all those people who emailed the council previously, both for and against, re-notify the people within the PUD area who were legally required to be notified, and then try to take a look at those who spoke at the planning commission meeting, in the city council meeting, and how to, figure out how to contact them. Now, I would like to logistically bring this to the planning commission next meeting, September 15th. We, you know, this has gone on a couple of times, and we've had several items of input, but that would be my suggestion to staff, if the council has any other direction, who they'd like to notify. I think that would be well-taken from staff, any other direction of who we should notify, but that was our original idea. The other thing, if we were going to have more consideration, this is just a staff recommendation, it would be nice to have new information. I think we've heard that the view is going to be obstructed, and people do not like the idea... the idea of adding lots to this. I think that's, that's been clearly indicated in our two hearings, and the council and the Planning Commission have taken that into consideration in their deliberations. What I would suggest is if we could, at both meetings, ask the person conducting the meetings if they would take new information, that would help everyone in their findings significantly.
Well, would the new information be, for example, I, I had some items here that, numbers, that I would just give a specific basis, not just look at your whole thing again, specific items to have them look at. Would they be given more information or some more complete information than what, for example, the, there was other land available for use. They were not told about other land that has obviously been there, available for use since 2000.
What I envisioned was a staff report talking about those issues more in-depth.
Okay.
And, of course, the Planning Commission and the council have to consider those things we come up with and can, you know, accept or reject what, what we come up with, but that would be what I would envision as a more thorough report. I will say, I believe we handled this case like we would any other zoning case and put the findings and factors as, as such, but now that we've been directed by the council to have a more thorough report, I believe staff can work with the, the Planning Commission to come up with a more thorough report.
So do you feel like it's, you're talking about specific basis. Are you feeling like, if you're just telling them, "Look at all your factors and findings again," that's a basis specific enough? Is that good enough?
I, I think the statutory language is, is broad enough where it says "specific basis" that if, if you decide that you want them to revisit the 17 factors, that that is a specific basis.
That that would count, okay.
I had another, I had a question.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Just because you touched on it, that petition, is that, it was in our material, so does that go along back to the planning?
As part of the reason for the opposition, we would probably add that in. That's not a legal petition stopping or causing an extraordinary majority.
And give this a chance to get a legal one. If you do it September 14th, that doesn't give...
Now, now, I, you know, I don't want to take...
You know, I'm gonna interrupt you here, and I apologize for that. We have a motion and a second. A lot of these have to do, if, if that doesn't pass, this is moot.
Right.
I think we need to pass the motion. All of these items, such as what Sherri is raising, are, are relevant that I think we need to answer, but we need to, I think we need to have a ruling on the motion before we get there.
I think we're still in discussion.
Well, we were still in discussion, and Sherri was getting clarification.
And I was getting clarification.
And I still, I want to make some comments as well, so I, I think it was, I think it was okay.
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, it's okay.
What was my question, Troy? About the petition. The petition. Okay, so where are we with that? If they, do they have an option to do another?
The petition had a 15-day time limit to be filed legally. That's in the statute, and that's, that's the requirement. 15 days from the Planning Commission meeting. That time expired August 4th. That is no longer, that question is no longer, uh, uh, open to discussion. The petition, the petition can't be filed. I will say, the only effect of the petition is that it caused an extraordinary majority, which now our attorney has told us would be four of six anyway. So it'd take four of six to stop it, four of six to have an extraordinary majority, that is going to have no effect on the question overall.
Oh, so it is still four, change, instead of five, it was four?
You gotta have a four to win on the six-member board.
Okay, but before it was, you had to have a five to overturn.
And, and I think he, he's decided it was, it was just four. We, we're going back and forth on whether the mayor's position accounts, but, but either way, you could...
The difference is that a four on the negative side would win this next time around, not five.
Or positive, but right, you're right, you're, you're right. Yeah, that would be true. But then the question is, does going back to the Planning Commission again give them a new opportunity for a legal petition? That's my question.
No, no, it doesn't, and nor would it make any difference if it did. It still would take four to defeat it.
Okay. And more comments, Sherri, go ahead.
Okay, so to finish my question, then that will go back as part of the packet to the Planning Commission, whether it's a legal 15-day notice petition, that list that we had will go back?
We will...
That's all I want to make sure that you have at least...
We would include that, we would include that in our nature of the objections. I can't remember which number it is specifically.
Yeah, okay, um, okay, because having the, the legal one that's 15 days before, or after the planning, isn't gonna make a difference either way.
If you would've had four votes, you would've been able to defeat it last time, or whoever was in opposition could've defeated it with four votes, as, as it turns out.
Okay.
Great.
So we're still in discussion. We have a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission citing all 17 items for, and then we have a second. We've had some discussion, and, and I wanted to offer a couple of comments also. One, I have a, a couple concerns with the current motion, but my overall opinion hasn't changed. I still vote for it in that I think it should've passed last time because I thought the Planning Commission presented it a good case. However, that's not what we're discussing tonight. We're not taking up a vote to vote again for it. My, my concern is, I, I wish we weren't in this situation because I don't like the statute, and the statute, Rule D, puts us in this mess, that a tie fails, but then we didn't have a majority to really fail it, so we have to try again. So I would rather change the statute to eliminate the tie situations because it could happen again, and we could have a tie at the Planning Commission, and we could have a tie when it comes back here. And I don't think that when there's continuous ties, that we should just keep changing our votes to get a different outcome. I don't like that situation that we're in. I still wished it would've passed last week, but now we have a new situation. This, my second concern is, I don't think it's specific or gives credibility and justice to the hard work the Planning Commission put in to just say redo all 17. I think that sounds very bureaucratic, and I think if we don't have specific issues, I think we're just kicking the can back and telling them to do it over. So I don't, I don't think sending it back with all 17 items is really doing justice to the process. And my third situation is I, I can't support having it heard at September 15th when today is the 9th. So if everybody is worried about us following the exact process and everybody having time to speak, and this is a small town and not a whole lot exciting happens until maybe three things a year, I, I can't, six days after Labor Day weekend, I don't think that's fair. So I, I wish we could discuss this more. I'm not comfortable with the current motion, but I'm willing to call a vote if that's where we're at.
You can direct that we move it back.
Let me try to explain my, method of my motion.
Okay.
And, and let me say that I think your comments are, are well-stated, and I appreciate the fact that lawyers spend their lives wanting to change statutes. Don't waste your time. That isn't gonna happen. With regard to my motion, I, like you, felt that the Planning Commission did a sufficient job with which we can make a decision. I watched the rerun on TV. I read the minutes of the meeting. The, the minutes are not verbatim, and they're pretty poor rendition of what happened. The reason that I said 17 is that I would like for the Planning Commission to go back on, on each item and verbally say, "Okay, what, what are the conditions here?" I don't think they did that. I only saw about three items that were stated, and I forgot the gentleman's name that made the motion, but he, he made a couple, and had I been on the bench, I would've mentioned seven or eight or nine of them.
Okay.
In support, and I think they have the opportunity to do that. I don't think they have gone through all 17 carefully to decide which ones are there and not there, and that includes the issue of, of the opposition. And that's the reason that I want the whole thing to go back through there. How did you arrive at the decision? Did you consider 1 through 17? I didn't do that flippantly. I did that with the intention that they would answer those questions and might better persuade others on this bench that maybe they actually did do a proper job, and maybe it's something that we ought to be supporting. And that's the reason that I made that recommendation. And if it's, if it's bureaucratic, so be it. That, that's the way it is. Your third item, I forget what your third item was.
The six-days notice.
For what?
Six days to hear it at the Planning Commission, six days from now. If we pass it to send it back, it would be heard in six days.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I don't know what the timing is. My position on that is whatever's fair and correct, keeping both sides' interests at heart. And if you're the owner and you're wanting to get something going, it's pretty upsetting to have to start over again. And if you're in the opposition, it, it gives you whatever period of time it is to do whatever it is you want to do. So you, you, you never get that fair and straight. So I, I think if the motion passes, then maybe we can talk about the timing.
Wouldn't that be included in the motion?
No, I'm just returning it to the Planning Commission.
But it changes my vote whether I support that or not, if, if the intention is to hear it in seven days, and that's less than seven business days once we leave here this evening.
When is it that you'd like the Planning Commission to hear this?
I read that if we did agree to send it back, then people would be notified, and I think we usually do that through the mail, so they're...
Be like 30 days?
I think 30 days would be reasonable.
I don't have any problem with that. If we need to set a date in here...
I think there's a one...
I think the, I think the opposition centers around their protest position, petition not getting filed, and therefore they feel their voice has not been heard. So let them file it. Let them file it tomorrow morning and give them a chance to be heard and then go through. If that's, if that's not a factor, then that...
Well, let me, let me ask Les.
Because we're gonna be here again if we don't let everybody have their voice heard.
When's the next day of the Planning Commission? Is that six days from today?
September 15th.
Okay, and what's the next Planning Commission?
I would agree with you on that, Chris, for sure.
It, it looks like we're trying to shut the window.
If you want to do it October 20th, it honestly makes no difference to me. If I'm the owner, I'm unhappy, but it's the process.
Right.
Again, I supported it last week, but...
So if you need to amend the motion to make the hearing date October 20th, I will, I'd make that amendment.
Okay.
I'd accept that.
And you would amend your second?
To do what, for October 20th?
So we have an amended motion by CR to return zoning case Z 2015-02 back to the Planning Commission to reaffirm their position on all 17 items and to be heard at the October 20th Planning Commission, and a second by Quentin.
Question with your word about reaffirm. Is it to re-explore? I mean, yeah, I wrote down what you said. Okay, what do you want to use?
Well, reaffirm is what the statute had.
Reaffirm. Reaffirm their yes or no.
Reconsider.
Reconsider, that's fine.
Okay. So we have an amended, amended motion by CR to return zoning case Z 2015-02 to the Planning Commission to reconsider the 17 factors and findings at the October 20th Planning Commission meeting, and a second...
Yes.
...by Quentin.
Madam President.
Any further discussion? Yes, Sherri?
I would like to. I was the one that had brought that up at the City Council meeting about returning it because I had been at that planning meeting, and I felt like we needed to make sure we did due diligence and made it very clear that we had looked at everything and done, done everything we could, because this is a very hot topic here in Andover. There's a lot of passion with it. We need to make sure we look at everything and do it right.
Any further...
And if I remember, you were opposed to it.
Any further discussion on the current motion and second? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There are none. The motion passes 6 to 0. At this time, I'll turn the chair back over to Mayor Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll move on to item number 14, which is the engineering contract for the pedestrian bridge study with Parsons Springerhoff.
As you recall, from the discussion at the last workshop meeting, we were asking for approval of a study of the US 54 and Andover Road intersection for a pedestrian crossing. We've worked with Parsons Springerhoff in the past on our zoning regulations and our US 54 corridor study, and we would, we would recommend approval of this contract.
Questions?
Does, were there, will their study include projected usage rates?
That's a, that's a very difficult projection to make, Quentin, but that will be one of the considerations, what they would, would expect for use.
Yeah, okay.
We're, we're kind of going into this with eyes wide open to look at any style, any location, whatever serves the public the best.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
Sorry, did you have a question?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve contract with Parsons Springerhoff for pedestrian bridge study on Highway 54, as presented.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
And authorize the mayor to sign such contract.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Sherri to approve the engineering contract with Parsons Springerhoff, as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15.
Mr. Mayor, in front of you tonight is a contract with Piper Jaffray and Company for financial advisory work on the Series A 2015 general obligation bonds. Also included in this packet, proposals from Springstead, Inc. and Columbia Capital Management for Financial Advisory Services on the two other bond issues we're contemplating doing this year. Because of circumstances, I feel it's appropriate for the city to try to work with a few different financial advisory firms and get a feel for what type of service we would get. You will notice in my memo, their prices are very similar for the bond issues we're about to undertake, but just as we've used different engineering firms and different architectural firms, I think at this point, it would be advisable for the city to go forth with, working with a few different financial advisory firms, so we can just get a feel for what else is out there and what other services are, can be provided. And then after these three bond issues, I think we could come back and have a discussion about if we want to work with somebody permanently or continue to work with a variety of firms. I certainly am open for any suggestions or comments from the council and the mayor on this particular item, but that would be my recommendation going forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris.
I would like to move to approve the financial advisory agreement with Piper Jaffray and Company for the Series A 2015 general obligation bond issue, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Sherri to approve the financial advisory agreement with Piper Jaffray, as presented. Further discussion?
I just have to comment that I think that's a good recommendation from our new city administrator.
Well, it was after much discussion and deliberation. What are we going to do? Obviously, he was our financial advisor. And we thought it was appropriate, and it was his idea, I'll give him credit, to try a few of them, see if you like them, see how, what level of service mainly is the, the important issue, and then go from there, so this is a good start. I like the motion and the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16. Mr. Brown, you were up. Mr. Brown, you are up.
Mr. Mayor, council. What I've got in your packet this week is a request to proceed with a request for firm proposals from bidders for our networking project for the city of Andover. As you recall, from the workshop in July, the network we've got does not support all of the sites we've got. The connection between City Hall and Police Department is slow and ineffective at being able to carry all the load we need. And so I would like to proceed with getting vendors to bid on upgrading our network and adding all of the remote sites in to give us the capability of doing things like securities, excuse me, adding sites to the security system and getting cameras and getting everybody on the network so that we can go forward with all of the data and security type needs that we need for them. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Craig to solicit requests for proposals for the city network project.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Sherry to allow staff to solicit the RFPs for the city network project. Further discussion?
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd like to point out, I was in several meetings regarding this. And Craig is amazing and has done an excellent job of researching different possibilities, different companies. I don't think anybody could have done anything better to blow smoke up here or anything, but he did an excellent, exceptional job. And I think this is a great direction for our city.
Out saving us money again, huh?
Potentially. Further discussion?
This is not a request for a raise, is it?
Well, he didn't wolf whistle. He's supposed to whistle for me.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen. More standard traffic ordinances.
STO. Mayor and council, before you is a proposal to adopt the 2015 Standard Traffic Ordinance, forty-third edition. This year, there's very minor changes in the STO from last year's. There's some changes to the definition of free-on. They've added an auto cycle to the book. And there's also, probably the biggest change is they are allowing now vehicle operators with expired tags on their vehicle to go ten days before they can get a ticket, provided that they've already paid for the tag and they have a receipt. But other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I saw a look on your, a question on the tags. If you buy your tag, pay for your tag online, but you don't get it yet, you still haven't received a sticker, but you have that receipt that shows that you paid for it, you get a ten-day window there.
Okay.
But minor changes this year.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance adopting the Standard Traffic Ordinance, number forty-three, as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Sherry to approve the STO addition 2015 as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen.
Uniform Public Offense Code. Mayor and council, before you is a proposal to adopt the 2015 Uniform Public Offense Code, thirty-first edition, produced by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Again, this year is just a few minor changes. There are, they've basically modified the UPOC to be consistent with state statutes regarding some of the changes in firearms and carry concealed laws. Again, they have added another term for free-on. They brought in some new laws about scrap metal buying and selling, which really doesn't apply here in Andover. I don't think we have much of that. And they've also allowed for the legalization of a fantasy sport league. Again, pretty minor changes this year to the UPOC, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance adopting Uniform Public Offense Code, thirty-first edition, for 2015 as presented.
Second. Motion by CR, second by Quentin to approve the updated Uniform Public Offense Code as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Maybe on the member items? No.
No.
Excuse me. I forgot we added one.
The new item.
Council in front of you, what you have is a tentative lease agreement. And we'll have a lot of discussions with the Historical Society about utilizing the old library space there. They have a couple more requests. I will let Caroline elaborate on them. She's been to several meetings and discussions with them. We're trying to address their concerns so we could hopefully move forward on a couple different things here.
Right. Yes, this lease agreement, they are good with this, except for one item, and that has to do on termination. And I shared their concerns with the mayor and city administrator, and we all agreed that that was a reasonable request on their part. And their concern is that they give us the land, which that's what they're supposed to do, is give us the land that the old Gilmore House is located on, which I think got moved yesterday. Is that correct? It did happen, okay. I haven't been to the site to see it. But that was moved to behind the location now where the museum is in the old library. That land, we'll have a separate land contract, but they will be turning that land over to the city. And in that, in expectation for giving us that land, they were wanting to continue this agreement where they use the facility. And their concern is, if we can tell them in twelve months that they no longer can use it, then they will have given us that land and they will be out everything. And I understand that. So what we are going to add to that termination agreement is that if the city would opt to break that contract with them before the twenty-five-year period has expired, that the city would pay them the current value of the land, which is $10,750. So that's all we need to add to it to please them. And I guess maybe the attorney's looking at me. Is that something that can be put in there? And then we're all good to go?
You can put in there what you want to put in there.
Okay, that will, they will be perfectly happy with that. And then there would be a separate contract that I guess JT's firm would be also writing up on the transfer of the land, title company, something. But we'll get both of those ready, and they'll both be signed at the same time where they've got their agreement to use the facility and we have their agreement that the land on Main Street now belongs to the city.
Can you clarify, Caroline? You're putting in the lease, what if it goes, this is a twenty-five-year lease. What if we're in year twenty-two? The current value of the land, are you talking the 2015 value of the land?
The value, right now, it's $10,750 forever.
That doesn't change, whether this happens in twenty years or two years. Okay.
Are we going to get that in writing?
That's what...
That's what you're...
Yeah, that they would be reimbursed.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just sharing with you what would make them happy.
Did we already agree to the 2040?
That was a while back.
Twenty-five years.
So what we're trying to accomplish tonight is that if everybody on here will agree to those changes, then the staff can move forward.
Yeah, I mean, you can stipulate that tonight. We can take a straw vote if you want. But we're going to amend this lease agreement, if anybody, and bring it back to you for formal adoption. If anybody has any problems with it, we would like to know now before we waste everybody's time.
Right, that's what we're asking.
I don't have any problems with it, with the changes you...
Sounded like you maybe wanted to change it up a little bit after your year, say five or ten. If the lease gets terminated, you don't want to give them the money back?
No, I was concerned if the lease was terminated and the land was, that they gave us was worth fifty, sixty thousand.
No, it's present-day value.
Present-day value.
And that's based on county valuation.
Yeah, no, no, no.
As you all know, I mean, this land is directly, but it's the new trail.
Right.
Hopefully, we can do some kind of transaction.
And then they're, so straw vote-wise, it looks like that's okay with everybody. The second part has to do with their temporary signage. They had a banner made up that they would hang on the south side of the building. If you were driving, you're not going to see it if you're driving from the north, but if you were coming from the south, you would see it. And all it says is museum, and it's, I'm not sure about the dimensions of it, but let's say if you looked across the back wall there where the brown, where the exit sign is, it's probably about that width, maybe three feet. I'm not sure. Has anybody else seen it?
Did it follow up? It complies with the sign brands.
Yeah, it'll hang, I mean, it'll just be, it's not like it's going to go down the whole building or anything. I mean, it's dimensions. Anyhow, they're going to, they're going to come to the city and fill out an application for temporary signage. But here's the question, or if we want to do this to help them, would we be willing to have parks hang it for them? Or would we, are we, would we be willing to waive their fee for the temporary permit? Or would we, it's also a strange thing where they could do it for a year, but then like every eighty-ninth day or something, it has to come down for a day and then they can put it back up? Well, obviously, if we were going to...
I will pay it for the first year, but they need to come file a permit.
Okay, so, and I told them they had to come do that, so should, okay, we'll tell them that you're...
They already had the banner made?
Yes, the banner.
It fits within the...
I do too, because we have regulations.
I need, we would like to know if it does not.
Okay, now, she talked to you, actually, to find out where you had your banner made, and I think she went with whatever size that you were using. So hopefully, if you used it...
Oh, boy. So Ben's is illegal.
No, mine is legal. I did pay, the last time I had a banner, I did pay for it for a year. But I had, it was only, it's like good for three months and you got to take it down a day, then you can put it back up for three months and take it down a day. I just paid the year in advance, and I never put mine back forth like that.
You didn't take it down and put it up, you just left it up for the...
No, no, I only used it for like sixty days and never put it back up.
Oh, okay. Well, these are, these are just some of the things they asked.
You're close by. Just run on over and help them with that sign.
That's a tall building.
I thought maybe somebody in parks would have the equipment.
Yeah, but if we're going to do that, I'm not going to send them over every three, every three months, I didn't think about that.
Right, that's why I hate to send somebody over. If we're really going to do this to help them out, do we really want to send city staff every three months to take it down and come back a day later and put it back up?
Sounds like a good scout project.
It sounds like you can probably make an exception of whatever your ordinance is saying.
No.
We can't?
But that is in ordinance form, so you're not able to take exception to your own ordinance.
We got into this before regarding them, I think.
I might also state, I'm a little reluctant to even enter into this lease agreement. I don't like that clause. I want to see it.
Which one?
The $10,000 deal, whatever it is. I just don't like it, and I don't think it's right for the city. But because of the value, I probably won't do anything. But if you're going back to report that everybody thought it was great, we really don't think it's that great.
I think it's a deal breaker if we want to get this done and get this transferred. And quite honestly, I concede their point. I mean, I realize the city's been doing a lot for them, but once they give up that land, now they have nothing. They could sell that land to somebody, and...
Got a free building for twenty years.
I understand, but I see their point, too.
It isn't worth any more discussion, but if you think that we're happy about it, we're not overly happy about it.
Speaking for yourself or the council?
It's still your fault, it's yours and Kevin Dryland's fault.
Really?
So we don't even want to hear about it.
They ought to be thanking me.
You don't want to hear about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, don't lay this one on me. I was going to sell that building a long time ago.
That's got some history with it.
And we were going to have $90,000 for it a long...
I think we could bring back, I think we could bring back a video of the Clark.
Yeah, yeah.
From historical Clark.
Okay, so what we're looking at then is that we're going to try to tell them to fill out the application and...
They need to come into City Hall.
They need to go through the process like everyone else.
Get the temporary sign permit. Fill it out, bring it back. Staff, please call me, I will come down and pay for their application fee. And then go from there.
We need to...
And we'll bring this lease agreement back to you. We may have to figure out a different way for them, help them put that sign up, but that's not a big deal.
I think scouts would be great.
I think we got firemen with ladders, too.
Right next door.
Right next door.
That's true.
Chief's looking around like, what?
With ladders, that's very true. I didn't think about that.
We'll talk about that. How's that? All right, anything else? Were there member items?
Sure, I went to a WAMPO meeting today. Couple cool things or quick things to talk about. One is they're doing a kill log on 235. They're kind of reconfiguring. They figure that it'll be under construction until November of 2018. I know, I thought that, too. Everyone kind of laughed when he said it. Also, they're in need of a counter to count bicycle and pedestrian traffic in Andover, September seventeenth and nineteenth, for two hours each day.
To hand-count?
To hand-count, because there's no other real way to get bicycle and pedestrian traffic. So if you're interested in it, or if you're interested in volunteering a little bit, let me know.
They can't put one of those cords down there like if you...
It only picks up weight, so you can't do kind of...
What are you talking about?
It's in, I am unsure of the specific location, but if anyone's interested, let me know and I'll get you in touch with the right people.
How many hours do they want you to do that?
It's two hours.
Two hours.
Each day, seventeenth and nineteenth. It could be different people volunteering for each day if they want.
This gentleman in the audience was wanting a job.
Can you do this motion for two hours?
I believe he hangs signs.
All right. The last quick thing, they're looking at implementing some kind of way to manage all the assets for WAMPO, for all the NPOs. There's twenty-six cities, I believe. And they asked me to chair the steering committee for it. So I'm going to be on that committee and help figure out what tools to use or software to use for that. That's all.
Cool. Sherry?
Hi, I do have one comment. And I have to look at my notes here to see what I wrote down. The, when Candace spoke and she said, oh, the buttons for Greater Andover Days will be used for the Flint Hill services. I just want to make sure that those people that sell the buttons, just because I've heard comments in the past, there's always someone that'll come back and say, "We were told we had to buy a button to come to Greater Andover Days." So I guess I just want to make...
Yeah.
Well, that it was just required to get in to go to...
You are.
It is.
It is.
But not knowing what it was going for. I don't know that you, everybody has to buy a button.
Wow, Sherry.
I always buy a bunch of buttons.
Yeah.
But I just walked in.
It's the same premises Wichita or...
To make sure that people know.
Are in our park enjoying that without a button on? Yes, there always is. Is it right? No. That's the way it is.
I just would like to make sure.
We do have button salespeople, though, that go around the park and walk up to people that don't have a button and say, "Would you like to buy a button?" It'd be remarkable how, how many buttons they could sell that way.
Could I have clarification? Is, your question is that you're just wanting it to be better known to people buying buttons that...
Proceed.
Where the proceeds are going, yes.
Okay.
That's just a comment, not a share. Thanks.
No comments.
Well, I just want to say, next Friday, we know, is September eleventh. Well, I just want to say, next Friday, we know, is September 11th, and at Baller Community College, we're gonna do a Patriot Day ceremony thanking the first responders, police and fire. So I hope everyone takes a moment of silence to remember this day that we had, followed by the big game, Andover versus Andover Central football. So I'll be there in the, in the Mayhem Friday, September 11th. So-
This Friday.
This, this Friday. So, very big game. No matter how it turns out, remember on September 12th, everyone is supposed to be nice to each other. So, no toilet paper in the trees and all that stuff. So I just want to say, if it's gonna rain, I don't want any toilet paper in the trees. So, but it'll happen, but anyways. I hope everyone has a wonderful weekend. I want to thank everyone for participating in our little pieces of government that, that we can, and it makes it all good. Thanks.
Karen?
I have no item.
Quentin?
I just have a question on this why dedication. Are they, they're not finished, are they?
On Park.
They're still under construction.
Yeah, last time I was down there, they got the outside all done pretty well, but-
And they tell me that as soon as they wrap up this building, they're gonna roll right into the other building that was shown on the site plan, the indoor soccer building.
Wait a minute. The, the building they're talking about here is the-
Office building or basketball.
South of the soccer fields there.
Yeah, that's correct.
Now, what other building are you talking?
You're saying they're not done?
There, there is a indoor courts building and an indoor soccer building shown in their plan.
So the building they're building is the courts?
The courts.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that's what they're gonna dedicate at this event?
Well, it's giving another month. They're getting another month. Those floors go down fast. I'm telling you. They will go, they will, that'll amaze you. If the exterior structure is done, those wood floors would, they go down fast. They're planning on a month, so, from now, right?
Yep.
Anything else? That's all.
Staff have any?
I guess related to that, are any of you planning on attending? Because we want to be sure that we have some city representation of that, and staff can absolutely go if any of you are available, but we just want to make sure.
I'd go, but I gotta hang signs.
The eighth.
October eighth.
Let us know when we can RSVP here in the next week on behalf of-
Want you to send out an email.
Whom over.
Right, or send out, asking us, or text us.
Anything else?
Have council members talk with the city clerk about the League of Municipalities in Topeka. Has anybody given you any indication of their interest on that?
Tell me the date on that again.
That's our deadline of September 20th, correct?
Yeah, to let me know whether or not-
What's the date again, do you remember?
Topeka, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll probably go.
That's in Manhattan, though, correct?
No, it's in Topeka.
It's Topeka, okay.
Oh, if you're going, I'm going.
Pass.
We always go to those, don't we?
It seems like it's usually around Columbus Day. Yeah. But the 20th is the date that you-
You need to hear by.
Have to submit to them to get us in on the-
Yes.
Reduce rates or whatever, okay.
And hotel rooms.
Yes.
You guys enjoy yourselves. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to note, the Chief Financial Officer, Donna Davis, noted that we nearly made $200,000 on our sales tax in August, and that is a-
What?
Well, actually in June. This happens to correspond with our concert, but that's, that's, that's a record for that month, all time. We've only, we eclipsed $200,000 one time this year, and that's the first time we've ever done that, but we're well on track to exceed last year's collections. And so we're very excited about that. The other thing I'd just like to say is mention that the game will be on Cox 22, is my understanding, so if we have a sellout crowd, you can also always watch it at home. And yes, I hope that we're all great friends at the end of it, but I really would like Brad Estes to have the greatest game of his life on Friday nights.
Oh, thanks. Yes, I'll be on the, the-
Oh, Troy.
East side.
Jaguars.
It's a rivalry.
It's for everybody.
The league conference is October 10th through the 12th.
Okay, that is Columbus Day weekend.
Anything else? Can we leave?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Quentin, second by Caroline. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.